It's Councilor Santos checking in on a second time.
Good afternoon, Councilor Santos. We can hear you loud and clear. Good afternoon, Councilor Power. I see you've joined the session. Can we just check your mic, please?
Hi there.
Thank you. Sounds perfect. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone, to the Planning and Development Committee. We'll begin today with the roll call. Deputy Mayor Singh.
Present.
Councilor Santos.
Present.
Councilor Vicente.
Present.
Councilor Barr.
Present.
Councilor Keenan.
Present.
Councilor Maderos. Come back to Council Fortini.
Present.
Councilor Tor. I think he's making his way down. Councilor Power.
Present.
And Mayor Brown. Not. Councilor Maderos. We have approval of the agenda. Charlotte, will you like to recap any additions that we're adding to the approval of the agenda today?
We did issue a revised agenda at approximately 12:30 today, and on that agenda worth was just the additional presentation from staff was published, and thirty-five items of correspondence related were published at that time, along with one delegation request from Sylvia Roberts also added to the agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Singh. They approved the agenda unless anybody else has any additions, deletions. Seeing none, all in favor? That carries. Declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. We'll skip over the consent motion. Public delegations. Our first item is six point one, delegations, proposed adoption of the city of Brampton, twenty twenty-three official plan. Sylvia Roberts, Brampton residence, resident. Welcome, Sylvia. You have five minutes.
Hello. My name is Sylvia Roberts. I'm resident of Brampton. I have been following this process for four years. I'm aware that staff has spent approximately, literally, the last decade working on this because of this is really the first true redoing of the official plan since the city was amalgamated. And there is a lot of stuff going on in this. There's a lot of moving parts, and I'm aware that basically, no matter what you have to approve it today, the statutory guidelines do not give you any other option. So it's unless this was somehow dramatically worse than the old official plan, you have to approve it because otherwise Doug Ford can crayon whatever he would like, which is not something the city of Brampton would like, or I'm sure no one in the planning department would like that. I've been following this, and staff has done a good job. This represents a dramatic improvement over the old official plan. It's just a huge project, and I'm really pleased with all the work that staff has been doing. There were a couple areas that I was frustrated, and then I bothered to go and look through the comment metrics, and basically, all of them are either directly or indirectly the result of planning from the region of Peel. One of those fun things is they appeared to have shot down the possibility of the city uttering the concept that we may exceed one million people by twenty fifty-one. Because I'd asked them to consider that, because our proposal for one of the tracks we saw for population would exceed that, and then they did change that interim, and then they changed it back. So I looked, and as the chair is aware, the region of Peel may not have done a thorough and meticulous job of figuring out exactly how we're going to arrive at nine hundred and eighty-five thousand people, and that it would definitely not exceed a million people. The reality is, the city is, the question is not whether the city will exceed one million people by twenty fifty-one. The question is whether the city is going to exceed one million people by twenty thirty-one. And as such, there are a lot of moving parts in here that are going to need some work in order to that. But the problem is, until the region of Peel is gone, and they no longer have approval authority for this, staff can't fix this. This isn't anything that staff has done wrong. So effectively, what I'm saying is, pretty much as soon as the dust is settled and the region of Peel no longer has planning control, the commissioner is going to need to bring forward a major revisions to the official plan, A, just because of the countless references to the regional official plan, but also to fix all of the stuff the region of Peel is not letting us fix. We also have the Transportation Master Plan, which is overdue, and I'm aware there's a lot of reasons why it's overdue, including there was literally a pandemic, which is not something staff can foresee, and there's been a lot of adjustments needed to be made. But because of that, we are rolling with the Transportation Master Plan from twenty fifteen, which is based on population estimates from twenty thirteen, which are revision to a two thousand and six forecast, and basically does not consider the concept of international students and assumes immigration is going to be at dramatically lower levels. As such, our Transportation Master Plan is grossly insufficient, and there are just so many moving parts and that we are going to need to fix. So I would like to applaud staff for all of the time and effort they have put into it. It's a very good plan, and I want to make sure that council is aware that planning staff is going to need the resources to bring in a major update relatively quickly to fix stuff that isn't their fault. It is the result of provincial government changing everything constantly, the regional government, and a lot of structural changes to that. Thank you. That's my delegation.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Keenan, the received delegation, proposed adoption of the city of Brampton, twenty twenty-three official plan. All in favor? That carries. Our next is staff presentations. Seven point one, staff report, proposed adoption of the city of Brampton, twenty twenty-three official plan, Brampton Plan. But first, I'd like to start us off a little bit. The official plan review process was started in two thousand and nineteen. It's gone through three drafts, a number of public engagement sessions, including focus groups, town halls, workshops, and open houses. I really want to take this opportunity to thank staff for the tremendous amount of work that you have put into this. This has been an incredible undertaking, and the work that you have done will not go unnoticed. I'd also like to thank council for their support and insight that was provided to staff that has allowed the Brampton Plan to become what is in front of us today. Brampton Plan lays out a path to implement the aspirations of Brampton twenty forty vision and achieve sustainable urban and vibrant future for the city. It will guide Brampton's growth to twenty fifty-one while still aligning with the key goals that residents and stakeholders have identified. Today's staff are bringing forward the final Brampton Plan for council's consideration. Unfortunately, the province has seemed fit to throw a little wrench into the mix with their announcement today that really, I don't think anybody knows truly what it means. We cannot go today without looking at our, our plan to set the direction and to thank staff for the tremendous amount of work that they have done. So regardless of what the province wants to do, today, council, the planning committee will make a decision. And I think mainly because the province did not clearly articulate what they truly are wanting to do today with this announcement at ten o'clock that is boggling the minds of so many across the city of Brampton and Vaughan and Calladon and every other municipality around us. So Steve, with that, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Pulashy and members of council. Just to echo some of the comments from the chair, I too want to thank staff for all of their significant efforts over this three-plus-year journey. Brampton Plan really sets the stage for the next evolution of growth in the city, for us to hit our target of a million people up to twenty fifty-one beyond. The plan sets the stage for our residents and businesses to enjoy complete communities where they can live, work, and play, and also represents opportunities for the city to showcase innovation in having what I consider a fairly flexible policy regime while still protecting the long-term interests of the city. And to just touch on Councilor Pulashy's point, you're obviously, some of you may have heard today, Minister Calandra had a news release that spoke to the province, winding back changes to official plans. In the news release, there was mention of urban boundaries, the green belt, and MZOs. The minister has given municipalities forty-five days from today to respond to the news release, and staff will be moving fairly quickly to, with the province and the region, to unpack and better understand what that may mean, if anything at all, to Brampton Plan. With that, I'm going to pass it over to the team to walk us through our presentation, and then we'll open up for questions.
Afternoon, Chair. Members of council, members of committee and staff. Greg Bender from WSP, a project manager for the official plant project, with me is Matt Rodriguez, deputy PM and the policy lead that's been doing a lot of the writing. I want to reflect on the commentary used to introduce this particular item on the agenda. I will say, very well said. There's lots of municipalities, I think, potentially scrambling right now, trying to figure out what do we do now? And I think that pushing ahead is a very, very good point for discussion. If you wait, you'll just continue waiting and waiting and waiting, because from what I can tell, it doesn't seem like anything's ever going to stop changing. And then the official plan is, it's an opportunity to demonstrate where the city has been, where it's going, and this is a good, strong snapshot in time that you can use to build and continue evolve your community. We've got a fairly lengthy presentation, and I don't want to necessarily retrace steps, but I reflect on where we were almost four years ago to the day when this project kicked off. And where we are now, I would say, is not only a significant representation of collaboration at its best, working between our consulting teams and city staff. It's been a fantastic collaboration. I want to thank everybody for, for all of their effort and amount of time over the past four years. Before we get into the presentation, what's key today is to talk about sort of where we were, but where we are now, and sort of what's changed since the last version came before committee. If I could get this slide advanced, please. So we want to talk a little bit about what went into developing the Brampton Plan. Certainly, again, four years of effort. We want to talk to you about, you know, the overview of the document, but as I mentioned, what's changed? Because it's important to understand where we've been and where we're going, and what has influenced the document that we're here today to talk to you about. And we'll talk to you about next steps, and then we can certainly entertain any particular questions that committee may have. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thank you so much, Greg, and good afternoon to the committee. I'll walk through these slides, and what we really want to do here is tell a story of the process of preparing Brampton Plan, highlight some of the key changes, and also introduce the community to those who may be tuning in to what this plan is and how exciting and important it is to the community. Next slide, please. Could we go back one slide? Sorry. Yep, right there. Perfect. Thank you. So just a quick overview of how we developed this process. It's certainly been an iterative plan to get to where we are today at the end of phase five. As Greg alluded to, we got started with phase one really early in twenty twenty, end of twenty nineteen. We had a speaker series. I think it was one of the last events some of us attended before COVID set in, and then we pivoted. And with the city team, we continued a really comprehensive engagement program over the next few years, including city structure workshops, updates to council, focus group meetings, meetings with committee, a number of topic-specific town halls, followed by statutory consultation. Throughout this whole process, we met and struck a technical working group with agencies and staff across the whole city and the region. City staff undertook consultation with indigenous communities, city staff departments, and a multicultural media radio series was hosted. So a really comprehensive program, which on the next slide just sort of summarizes the volume of engagement that we had through this process. So a brief snapshot, we had over three thousand people attend workshops and activities over the past several years, received over a hundred thousand visits to the webpage and over twenty-five thousand downloads of documents, so hope some people have had a chance to digest the document and the materials that have been up, and had over twenty-five meetings with focused, focus groups and other, other audiences to have topic-specific discussions. And again, a really comprehensive engagement program that, again, given some of the challenges at the onset of this project faced by COVID nineteen, the team was able to adapt to. Next slide, please. As council may be aware, seven discussion papers were prepared a couple of years back that spoke to specific topics and emerging issues that needed to be dealt with in Brampton Plan, followed by a policy directions report that served as the roadmap for preparing the document. And as the chair alluded to, three drafts of Brampton Plan to date with consultation and review periods following the release of each of those iterations of the document. Next slide, please. I'll give a brief overview of our city structure on the next slide. The city structure really, really tells a story of where the city is growing and where the city is also not growing. And so it helps realize a number of other benefits, including addressing rapid growth, health, wellness, and safety, building great urban places, inclusivity, financial sustainability, and certainly mobility, climate change, and housing affordability, amongst others. Next slide. The city structure, core to the city structure is the integration of sort of land use planning and transportation and mobility planning. And so a really intentional effort was made through this process to understand those locations in the city where the, where the active transportation, the transit and the street network are either in place or will be in place in the future to accommodate growth. And so really, an intentional effort in the beginning of the plan to link growth management and mobility. If we're not building places that people can get to and from and within, we're not building the best places that we can. And so we really tried to stitch those and integrate them together. Next slide, please. This is what the city's structure looks like. There's certainly lots of different elements to this, and I'll highlight just a few. The yellow areas are community areas, so these are the, certainly the vast majority of lands within the city where you'll have, you know, neighborhoods, mixed-use areas, commercial areas, and the like, followed by employment areas in blue. And that's certainly the areas where jobs and other sort of industries are concentrated within. Green is the natural heritage system and areas where growth isn't planned to occur. And then with, over, over top of that are a series of overlays comprised of urban and town centers, urban boulevards, corridors, and major transit station areas. And really, what this map tells the story of is where the city is growing, where we're planning to grow, and again, shows the areas that are also intended to be protected. Next slide, please. Just a brief overview of the planned document itself. I printed it off the other day, and I think it was a one point seven five inches thick, so it's certainly a substantial document. It's structured across five chapters. So we start by, you know, imagining Brampton and setting the vision, followed by shaping Brampton, which is the city's structure and land use designations. Chapter three are citywide policies that deal with a whole wide range of topics ranging from housing to urban design to climate and sustainability. Chapter four contains site and area-specific policies, and I'll unpack that chapter in a little bit more in a later slide. And chapter five is implementation and measurement. As, as council is aware, the work to actually realize Brampton Plan starts today. And so there's a number of initiatives and action items that are set out in chapter five, including the growth management program, which will be key to realizing the policies that are set out in this document. There's about thirteen schedules, and wanting to highlight that schedule is one B, six C, and thirteen A through N are new in the final Brampton Plan, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail coming up. Next slide, please. I'm going to go over now into our strategy to build an urban city, and again, this is the overlays and land use designations that are contained in Brampton Plan. Next slide, please. So starting with centers, boulevards, and corridors, certainly the locations within Brampton where the highest intensity and the focus of growth and intensification is directed towards. They're planned as attractive, vibrant urban places and are logical places that are well-served by transit to support both housing and employment growth. Really focused on the, the design of these areas and creating them to be great places to live, work, and play. And corridors are identified along, along streets served by the rapid transit network. And so really trying to build a network of places and figuring out new locations where, where that intensification may, may occur. Next slide, please. The mixed-use designation is a pretty significant designation in the context of Brampton Plan. There's two sort of primary community designations. There's mixed-use and neighborhoods. Mixed-use provides flexibility for future redevelopment and concentrates a number of different functions in key locations. Existing retail areas, so thinking of shopping plazas, primary major transit station areas and the work that the city's MTSA team has been working on, major institutional areas such as the hospital and shared in college, followed by urban, town, and neighborhood centers, as well as corridors and support corridors. What you see today on the map is where we're at today, and that doesn't preclude future changes in the expansion of mixed-use areas through future secondary plans or precinct plans that the city may undertake in the future. But we've set up this designation that can be used to, as the city goes forward. Next slide, please. The neighborhoods designation is, again, the broadest areas of the city, reflecting new and existing areas and sort of local institutional areas such as schools and parks. And we've set the framework to allow them to contain amenities for day-to-day living close to home, such as, you know, neighborhood-scale commercial, a little coffee shop at the corner, and providing direction for future work to, to set that out, such as the zoning bylaw. We've also permitted a wide range of uses with greater heights permitted within four hundred meters of support transit corridors, again, linking that growth, that built form to mobility. Next slide, please. So Brampton Plan takes a, perhaps a different approach to, to height than the current official plan in that it sets out a framework of heights. What the image shows on the screen is not certainly intended to be the definitive built form in each of these areas, but rather an illustration of what could be realized. So starting on the left, we have urban centers, so that's downtown, uptown, or and so really seeing a mixed-use environment of low up to high rise. As we move to the right and towards neighborhoods, you'll see we get to that lower rise, and really try not to preclude, you know, say in an urban center, that low-rise plus could be a portion of that development. It's not intended to be exclusive, but rather showing the, the range of building typologies instead of prescriptive heights that are contained within other plans and including the current plan. Next slide, please. In terms of employment areas, certainly another important part of the community. We're trying to protect those from further fragmentation, help support other economic development objectives related to the activity rate, investment, and other talent attraction. Within employment areas, additional uses are permitted within the mixed-use employment designation within major transit station areas, subject to further study and certainly the work that the city's been undertaking with respect to MTSAs. Next slide, please. The natural heritage system is a network of wetlands, valleylands, lakes, rivers, water resources, and any buffers and other restoration areas where we want to protect those areas, help the city support its climate goals, and intend it to be protected and enhanced over the long term. And really trying to recognize that these areas extend well beyond Brampton's borders and that, you know, to the neighbors on all sides, that they, they value a protected and strong natural heritage system. Next slide, please. I'm going to go briefly over the citywide building blocks, and these are those citywide policies that don't necessarily apply to a specific land use designation, but rather apply citywide, and I'll just highlight some of the key changes since the statutory public meeting. Next slide, please. Starting with the nurturing, strong, and connected communities building block, some of the key changes here are related to the citywide urban design guidelines, a separate process being undertaken by staff. We've updated and enhanced those policies to align with that work and make sure we're not incongruent with, with where the guidelines are heading. We've also removed the high-rise plus building typology. This was intended to sort of simplify and streamline the framework of heights in the plan. And so anything, what was previously high-rise plus is captured under the, the high-rise category. We've also revised those policies again in line with the other building typologies. Next slide, please. On the sustainability and climate change side, we've updated policies related to district energy. Also, a number of sort of a common thread throughout this presentation, pardon me, is that we revised policies and made other refinements in response to comments received. In the section, we also included new policies related to the circular economy. Next slide, please. On the housing and social matters side, certainly an important element of Brampton Plan is its renewed focus on housing. Some of the key changes since the statutory public meeting relate to a reorganization of the policies to clearly align with the priority of increasing housing supply and diversity, updating policies related to additional residential units or ARUs to align with recent provincial legislation and city amendments. And we also looking to provide that direction to the zoning bylaw to enable four-dwelling units as of right along rapid transit and support corridors on Schedule three B. We've also worked with staff to revise policies related to the multi-tenant housing, such as lodging houses and single-room occupancy housing. Next slide, please. On the mobility side, just a further refinement and clarification of Brampton's transit network comprised of regional transit, higher-order transit, rapid transit, and other support corridors such as frequent buses. Again, more policy revisions and refinements based on comments, an updated reference to the city's ongoing mobility plan project, which is certainly an important and concurrent initiative. Next slide, please. On the health and wellness side, we again made those revisions in response to the comments that were received and clarified and reinforced the parkland hierarchy, rather, in Brampton comprised of those large city parks all the way down to urban parks and squares. Next slide, please. Jobs and living centers is an important one related to economic development, cultural heritage, and arts and culture and tourism. And we have updated policies for smart cities initiatives. We've also enhanced and updated the cultural heritage policies, including requirements for additional heritage studies and reports. And again, more refinements based on, on comments that have been received. Next slide, please. So this next few slides, we're going to tag-team this with, with city staff who've been leading the, the major transit station area policies as we'll speak to some of the implementation work that's ahead for Brampton Plan. Next slide, please. So briefly introduce this and pass this off to city staff. So chapter four of the plan is one that contains special policies that apply to sites and specific areas in Brampton. And, and then this has been the case throughout the process. What's new here is the introduction of major transit station area policies, and maybe I'll pass it off. Is Claudia that will be speaking to these?
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon, members of committee, members of the public. My name is Claudia Loretta. I'm a principal planner with the policy section. And as Matt said, I'm just going to provide a brief overview on the major transit station areas. And as Matt said, I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the major transit station areas. And the major transit station areas, they're a small portion of Brampton Plan, but they are quite a significant component of the city's structure, as these are areas where the majority of the intensification and the growth will occur over 2051. Can you push the next slide, please? So, I'm sure most of you have seen this schedule. We have added this schedule that shows the location of our 27 MTSA's along the city. And this is based on the approval of the region's official plan, which identified 27 MTSA's along the major transit, along the higher-order transit corridors. Fourteen of those stations are the ones that are noted in green. Those are the ones that have been classified as primary, and they have delineated boundaries. We know that those are the MTSA's that will meet the density targets that have been established by the province. And those are the fourteen MTSA's that we've been focusing as part of Brampton Plan. The ones that are shown in circle will be the planned stations. Those are stations that we know that require a little bit further work to delineate the boundaries, and we will undertake that as part of our final phase of the MTSA study. Next slide, please. In terms of the project timeline, so the MTSA study has been done in parallel to Brampton Plan, and we initiated that work back in December of 2021. We completed the first phase as part of the preliminary area plans that were presented to the public, as part of some workshops that we undertook at the beginning of this year. And Phase Two, we have divided in two separate parts. One of those parts are what we are presenting today, the policy directions and recommendations at an official plan level. But next year, until spring of 2024, we'll be undertaking detailed land use planning at a secondary plan level or precinct plan level for each one of those MTSA's. And we also know that as part of the Planning Act, we are required to presume all lands within MTSA's. So, we have one year from the adoption of the official plan policies. So, by November of 2024, we will be preparing zoning bylaw amendments and design guidelines for each one of those MTSA's. So, Phases One and Through will conclude the study for those fourteen primary MTSA's. And then post-2024, we will initiate the work for the planned MTSA's that were shown in the circles in the previous schedule. Next slide, please. So, as I mentioned, there are fourteen schedules that have been added to Brampton Plan, so Schedule 13A to End. And these schedules have been prepared with the intention of creating transit-oriented complete communities. So, as part of the mixed-use designation, we are allowing the introduction of a full range of uses, anything from residential, commercial, institutional uses. But we do recognize that there are some areas where we don't anticipate any change over the horizon of this plan. So, some of those areas that you can see in the light yellow will be designated as neighborhoods. There are four MTSA's that are designated employment in the region's official plan. So, those are the MTSA's where we will locate the majority of intensification for employment and office. And as you can see, we have created some, we provide some transit transportation and connections. So, through our mid-block connections, there's new roads that we're proposing, active transportation network. And as you can see on the green little dots, there are some areas where we anticipate the need for new parks and community services. So, those areas have been denoted in there, and the location is just conceptual. We will identify their size and location as part of future planning. And I should mention, I have mentioned that in previous presentations. At this point, the land use schedules do not reflect applications that are currently still being reviewed. We are only reflecting those applications for which council has made a decision. But we will continue to process applications that are within MTSA's based on the land uses that are presented for adoption. Next slide, please. The Brampton Plan policies for MTSA's have been separated into three separate chapters. So, Chapters Two and Five have all the general policies for MTSA's, the objectives, definitions, implementation. And as Matt mentioned, the more specific details for each MTSA's have been added to area-specific policies. So, every land use designation that is reflected in the schedule, the minimum density requirements in the form of floor space index, development policies, and so on, have been added to the area-specific policies of Chapter Four. I think that, if I'm not mistaken. If you go to the next one, please. Yes.
Thanks so much, Claudia. And I'll briefly round out Brampton Plan with Chapter Five being the implementation-measurement chapter. Again, it's the collective efforts of the whole city, working together to implement and realize the vision set out in this plan, and also secondary plans that are important to realizing and providing that further detail for growth. This section also sets out policies for the zoning bylaw, as well as the growth management program, as well as a glossary of defined terms. Next slide, please. So, go over briefly just some next steps in the process as it stands today, and as council, as committee is aware, this may change, but also sets out sort of the path for some of the future work that staff are anticipating to be undertaking going forward. Next slide, please. So, since the release of the second draft Brampton Plan, a number of pieces of new legislation have been released related to Bill 2397, as well as the draft provincial planning statement. Those changes introduced through Bill 23 are reflected in the final draft Brampton Plan where possible, or where they have been proclaimed, such as the ARU or additional residential unit policies. But it is anticipated that following adoption, future policy amendments to Brampton Plan are anticipated in 2024 and beyond to address, including but certainly not limited to, the new provincial planning statement and changes once that is released and finalized, as well as any changes to the role of regional planning, including Bill 112. And so, again, this is certainly an important milestone in Brampton Plan, but certainly doesn't close the door for future work into next year and the years to follow as things evolve. Next slide, please. So, just a brief overview of some of the next steps. City staff are intending to come back on November 1st for council adoption of today's recommendation. Following that, the exact timelines are TBD, but we submitted to region appeal for approval, and we'll go through that approval process. And again, highlighting and underscoring that in 2024 and beyond, there will be future Brampton Plan amendments that may be necessary. Next slide. Just to conclude, really want to thank committee for their time this afternoon. Thanks staff for working with us over the past few years. It's been an incredible process and great to work with everyone here. And also want to thank the community stakeholders and everyone who got involved in shaping Brampton Plan, that the comments that we received, the input and the suggestions, and the ideas did not go unnoticed and, in fact, informed the plan that's in front of committee today. So, I want to thank everyone for their work and input in shaping Brampton Plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All members of committee, Brampton Plan is before us. Are there any questions? The document is that good. Any questions online? Seeing none. Okay. I have a couple recommendations for wording just based off of what the province had done today, but the recommendations before us on the screen, I'll ask for them to be amended with the following. And Charlotte, is that the staff report proposed adoption of the city Brampton 2023 official plan? Brampton Plan be approved in principle, subject to staff clarifying with the province and region municipality appeal any potential implications resulting from the October 23rd provincial announcement on terror winding back changes to official plans? I'd like to also add in there that we get a legal opinion as well. So, subject to staff, subject to a legal opinion and staff clarifying. It doesn't have to be its own, it can be put in with the other recommendation.
So, adding then to recommendation number six, that staff be directed to report back to council, including a legal opinion thereon?
Yeah.
With the findings of consultations with the province?
Perfect.
I have that in my notes.
Perfect. It's before you, taken as read. They move by Deputized. Counselor Santos.
Thank you. Sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair, it's through the amendment being proposed. So, I was not privy or to, or didn't see the announcement of the province this morning regarding winding back changes to official plans. What was it about? Is there any general info about what they're talking about? Or are we in another uncertain wait-and-see what this means situation?
A hundred percent, wait-and-see. We have no idea what they're doing, no clue.
Okay, thank you.
From my understanding, the mayor received a phone call from the minister, but the mayor has not shared anything with me in terms of what they were, what they were talking about. So, we're not a hundred, we're still not a hundred percent. We don't know what they want.
All right.
I don't think they know what they want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Singh. Anybody else on the board? Seeing none, all in favor, that carries. It's an interesting day. There are no committee minutes, no other business, no deferred matters. Counselor Tour will move receipt of all the correspondence, 11.1 through to 1 to 35. All in favor, that carries. Counselor question period, seeing none. Public question period. Any members of the public that would like to ask any questions? Seeing none. No closed session. Adjournment, been moved by Counselor Vicente to adjourn. Our next regular scheduled meeting is at seven o'clock tonight. All in favor, that carries.